So I'd like to go ahead and call this deliberation session of the Bloomington Common Council to order here on October 15th. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Here.
Pete Mount Smith.
Here.
Stasberg.
Here.
Daley.
Here.
Zulik.
Here.
Rosenbarger.
Here.
Thank you. Great, thank you. So tonight, we have a little bit of a different meeting. It's a deliberation session and these take different forms on different days depending on what it is that we're doing. So today, we have the Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission here to hear a little bit more about them. So we will start with a presentation, I believe, from Program Manager Noah Sandweis. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I put together-
Okay, not yet. I'm still summarizing the agenda, thank you. And then after that, there will be a discussion that will be moderated by Councilmember Zulik, and we'll have public comment within that. And then we will adjourn. Yes, Clerk Bolden.
My apologies to Councilmembers Rallo and Flaherty. I actually did not call their names for the roll.
Go ahead.
Flaherty.
Here.
And Rallo.
Here.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, thank you. I didn't look up and look at the screen either, so it's on all of us. Thank you guys for joining us remotely. So we will have that introduction by Program Manager Sandweis and then have the discussion moderated by Councilmembers Zulik, and then we'll adjourn. So, Mr. Sandweis, now the table is yours.
All right. Let's put it up. It's showing up there. Okay, well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for being here. We have a really good crowd. I particularly like to thank Councilmember Zulik for reaching out. I know there have been some members of the Commission who've been wanting to have a deliberation session for a while, and I believe on City Council as well. So, the way I had set up this presentation was to go through a handful of the general topics that we had discussed in sort of a pre-meeting that cover a lot of what we might want to go through in this deliberation session. So if you wouldn't mind, I can run through those real quickly, and we can use them as sort of a guide for the conversation. Does that sound good?
That sounds lovely, thank you.
Okay, awesome. So, one of the topics we wanted to discuss was commission appointments, how they're made, how to get them, terms. And for each of these topics, really, to have the opportunity for people in either the Council or the Commission to bring up any points that they think are particularly relevant or pressing. Design review process and delegation. There's been some question about who reviews what, and as I guess we'll find out, that sort of depends, depends on the codes written up by various historic district committees, as well as state legislation, which is more or less the same in this regard as local legislation, just in terms of what staff cannot review. There's some cases where certain things are exempt from review, and a lot of the time that'll sort of be district by district. But it also includes some sorts of maintenance. We generally don't review paint color. So there's a number of issues like that. Of repairs and maintenance, sort of going off of that point. That's a colorized photo. You know, a particularly pressing topic about, you know, the use of materials, timelines for doing repairs. This does sort of bleed into a lot of other topics, like procedure for issuing COAs, as well as what is subject to review. Demolition and new construction. This is an issue that also talks on our, touches on our demolition delay process, which that is something that Bloomington has that not every city in the state has, so that's an area where our code sort of adds something on to state code. This also touches on a couple of the things that are, a couple of the types of projects that are not reviewed by staff, by statute, which include new construction, demolition, and moving buildings. Enforcement and incentives, this is something that I know a lot of people have asked about. There is enforcement, there are some incentives, but I think a lot of people in the Commission would like to find ways to sort of tie that more to historic districts. We have a great program through the BUEA for historic preservation facade grants. There's also a sort of little-known assistance program for getting grants for architectural or engineering drawings, for work on historic buildings, and that's provided through the Commission. And then, sort of wrapping up with a discussion of other topics that might not be covered by, you know, any of these umbrellas. So that sound good to everyone? I think that'll more or less cover what we want to talk about. Okay. So we'll start at the very beginning, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, thank you so much. So now, it's going over to Councilmembers Zulik for the moderated discussion part, and then at some point, we'll need to shift into public comment.
Yes.
So, I'll kind of leave that to some degree in terms of discretion of where you want to put that comment in.
I think 8:10 is a good time to stop, then we'll have 20 minutes of public comment. I know there are some people in the crowd who are interested in speaking.
Okay, that sounds great. So we'll have public comments at 8:10, and I'll help time keep that.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you all so much for being here. This is a pet project of mine I've been working on for a couple months now. I will just request that all of the historic preservation commissioners, the first time you speak, if you could give your name for the record, for the clerk, and just mention that you are a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you. And so, like Program Manager Sandweis said earlier, we are going to start with repairs. And so our first, I guess, discussion question, big fan of the Socratic seminar style, but our first discussion question is how might the current code impact and/or facilitate a person's ability to address needed repairs in the event of needed repairs?
If I may start, I'd just like to read a couple parts of state and local code that most directly address this. So going off of the state legislation, which is, thanks, Indiana Code Title 36 regarding reconstruction alteration, maintenance, and removal of historic buildings and structures, and the preservation of historic character. A building or structure or any part or pertinence to such a building or structure, including stone walls, fences, light fixtures, steps, pavings, and other signs may be moved, reconstructed, altered, or maintained only in a manner that will preserve the historic and architectural character of the building, structure, or pertinence. A historic building may be relocated to another site only if it is shown that preservation on the current site is inconsistent with the previous subsection. Then, moving on to our local code, Title 8. Conformance to statutory requirements for buildings. Historic building, structures, and sites shall be maintained to meet the applicable standards established under the state statute for buildings generally, so as to prevent the loss of historic material and the deterioration of important character-defining features. Historic buildings shall be maintained to meet all applicable requirements established under statute and ordinance for buildings generally, including but not limited to Title 16, residential rental unit lodging and establishment inspecting program in the Bloomington Municipal Ordinary repairs and maintenance. Nothing in this section should be construed so as to prevent the ordinary repairs and maintenance of any building, structure, or site, so long as repairs or maintenance do not result in a conspicuous change in design, form, proportion, mass, configuration, building material, texture, color, that depends, I think most districts don't deal with color that much, location, or external visual appearance of any structure or part thereof. And certificate of appropriateness is not required for a handful of repairs, including ordinary repairs and maintenance as defined in the previous section, repairs and maintenance designated by the Commission, or in some cases, historic districts under their rules, or in special exceptions that are granted by the Commission.
Thank you.
Never happened before. Didn't know we could do that. I guess, yeah. Let's remember Pete Mount Smith.
So, Mr. Sandweis, you mentioned that the color of the building materials or the paint is not addressed in most of the districts. So could you clarify, the different historic districts, do they each have a different set of standards that things are reviewed under?
More or less, yeah. And this is the way that Bloomington does it, is that different districts, when they're established, in most cases, this is by, you know, groups of people who live our own properties in those districts, who then nominate them to the Historic Preservation Commission, will write up their own sets of standards that are then voted on and ratified by the Commission. There isn't a consistent way throughout the state where every city does this. For instance, in Fort Wayne, there's one set of standards for the whole city. Indianapolis is more like us, although their process tends to be a collaboration between Planning Department, the Historic Preservation Commission, and local neighborhood groups. So, I'd say that our process in Bloomington is fairly bottom-up and sort of federalized, if that's a good word for it. And when the Commission votes on sets of standards, they may have comments about, you know, how appropriate they think the degree of review is, but really what they're looking for is consistency with the state law and with federally recognized codes for what should be subject to review and why. Also, you know, consistency with language, which sometimes that gets a little difficult.
Thank you. I'll ask a question to the commissioners, if that's okay. In your review of different COAs, how has the timeline worked for residents, and have you felt that the majority of people who are bringing requests to you have been able to get the things that they're trying to get done, done in the timeline that's set
I'm Sam DeSuller. I'm the current Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. When things come before us, we often have to ask, how long has this been on the clock? We try to put things through as quickly as we can. That said, if we don't have enough information, if we don't feel like we know what the petitioner is asking, we will ask them to come back. So, I don't know if I'm answering your question in a substantive way, but we're not here to hold them up. We want, we want them to be able to fix their house. We want them to be able to add on to their house. We want them to be able to do what they need to do. That said, we are given the responsibility of making sure that they comply with whatever guidelines that have been set before us, and there's a wide range of those. So, in certain districts, like Elm Heights, it's much more restrictive. In certain other districts, like McDoll Gardens, they are much less restrictive. I really like McDoll Gardens, they're great. But, our job is not to be punitive or to stop people from doing what they want to do. It is to help them figure out what works within the context of an historic district.
Jeremy Hackett, I'm Vice Chair of the HBC. I recently went to a Historic Preservation Conference in Fort Wayne, and when I told people that the Commission met twice a month, most people were shocked by that. They, their commissions would maybe meet once a month, sometimes less. And so, we typically offer two times a month where we review things and get feedback to folks. I think only November and December, we only have one meeting because Thanksgiving and Christmas kind of throw off the calendar. So we, I think, just in terms of setting our schedule for reviews, we try to be as, you know, quick to respond as we can be.
There are also some items for more minor alterations that are handled by staff, and those, as a rule, don't require a quorum of the Commission for approval. So, you know, those are brought up at each of the bi-weekly meetings, but handled more sort of on a rolling basis.
Can I ask a follow-up? So which decisions are made at the staff level?
Again, this depends largely by district. So, just a second. Statutorily, there's a handful of things that staff cannot review. I'm just going to start with that. It's basically four things. Demolition, moving a building, construction of additions, and new construction of a new building. The most common things that are reviewed by staff are things like solar panel installation, or replacement of materials in such a way that wouldn't have a major effect on a house, or, sorry, not a house, a structure's, you know, appearance or integrity. And it does vary somewhat by district, because there are some guidelines that are very clearly like, we want, say, windows to be reviewed by staff, or ones that are, say, we only want staff to review what state code says staff can review. So, it varies a little bit.
So, does state code, those four things that you mentioned, that staff are not authorized to do certificates of approval for, or appropriateness for, is that something that state code says, or is that just something that our local code says?
It's state.
Okay, thanks.
My name's Duncan Campbell. It's state and federal. You know, the state-enabling legislation is enabled by a federal statute. So, there's two levels back that we have to comply with. And if I might just add about the timeline issue, in our statute, it says that we have to respond to a C of A within 30 days. If we don't, let's just say, well, what has happened on occasion is we don't have a quorum, and somebody has already been put back two weeks for a request for new information, let's say, and they've come back for the second time and there's no quorum, if the 30 days expire, they get their C of A whether we meet or not. So, we have a large, you know, quite a bit of incentive to keep the ball rolling. It's not the other way around. Yeah.
Does anyone have anything that they would like to add, or I'm waiting for them, I'd like to turn on. Hello? Thank you. Hello? Okay, thank you. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add to the repairs, or are we ready to move on towards construction and demolition?
Yeah, when I read this question in the packet, I thought it had to do with the cost of repairs, and that it might be more costly to repair something in, or replace something in a historic district than a neighborhood that's not a historic district. So, can somebody speak to that? I mean, like, I live in a historic neighborhood, and I haven't asked, I don't know if this would be something I would have to follow, but if we replace our windows, do they have to be the same shape? Like, it would have to be custom-made glass panes at this point, so I'm not sure. That could get very expensive, is what I'm saying. Yes, thank you.
This is Sam DeSuller again. Each district writes their own guidelines. The HBC has the responsibility to enforce those guidelines, and to, and the other part of that that we have to do is keep an eye on repairs, which is something that I feel we are still struggling to do. That said, it can be more expensive, but each individual neighborhood has the power to change that. We don't have that power. If there is a problem, or if the neighborhood feels that it is too onerous to enforce the guidelines as they are written, they have, and we encourage them, to rewrite those guidelines to better fit the neighborhood and the constituency, to serve them. I mean, we are here to serve that neighborhood, we are here to enforce the guidelines that the neighborhood writes. And if they change those guidelines, we will enforce those changes. So, if it is too, I mean, we have power of oversight, but we don't have any money. I mean, we have, as Noah mentioned, we have some limited funds for drawing assistance, but we don't have repair assistance in large part. So, I do understand that many residents are concerned about repair costs. That said, they can change that, and the power is vested in the neighborhoods and not with us. So, if that becomes an issue, I would encourage them to come to the Commission and talk to us, and help us change those guidelines with them.
So, I'm sorry, can I ask a follow-up?
I have a follow-up on the same thing, so go for it.
So, does that, like, okay, so let's say there, there's somebody who lives in a historic district, who is struggling to pay for replacing a porch or something that was damaged, and the, let's say they're in a district that has very strict rules, and they can't afford to do the repair or replacement while keeping the historic accuracy at the level that the standards are set at. So, and let's just say they go to the HPC, and the HPC is like, okay, well, if, you know, if you can wait, you can talk to your neighbors and get this changed. So does that end up pitting neighbors against neighbors? Like, what if they have neighbors who feel very strongly that, no, this porch needs to be exactly like, you know, the porches that are for the other historic homes in the district? I just see that this could run into some conflict if you have some neighbors saying one thing, and other neighbors saying, well, I can't afford that.
I hear that. I mean, that does happen. I think there are certain neighborhoods that are more, I mean, they understand what, and they're more united in what they're after. And I think there are some neighborhoods, I've heard some people who have tried to write guidelines in more neighborhood, in neighborhoods where that's more contentious, where they say that they're trying to herd cats. So, I hear that, and it can be an issue. Certain neighborhoods do give the HBC the latitude to rewrite their guidelines, and we have not done that as yet, but I think that's not a bad thing. If the neighborhood cannot agree on which direction they want to go, that said, there's churn. I mean, we are in an academic environment, and so neighborhoods change over time, and what those neighborhoods want and need change over time. And I think that it's important to revisit those guidelines and change them. And they are not static things. Also, they are guidelines, they're not rules. So, the, yeah, that face. So the Commission has the latitude to interpret those. That said, the more specifically the guidelines are written, the less latitude the Commission has.
It looks like Councilmember Flaherty has his hand up, so go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on the same area of thinking. Thank you to the commissioners who've weighed in, and to the Chair of the Commission, maybe, or whoever would like to answer, just some follow-ups on that process around guidelines. I believe it was mentioned when they're first written, the HPC, they're proposed, and the HPC approves them, but could you speak more specifically to who writes them, how they're selected, what that process looks like? And then also, same question basically, for rewriting guidelines. How is that decided? Is there a threshold level of signatures needed to say we're going to rewrite the guidelines? Is it a neighborhood vote? If it's a vote, is it a majority vote? Like, who has to make that decision? And then, again, who does the rewriting? You know, HPC approves it, I gather, in the same similar process, but I'm less concerned about folks not agreeing with one another, that's inevitable. I'm more concerned about process and kind of protecting views of all, I guess, or having not, having a process that's not stacked. And so I'm curious to hear more about the details there. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I will do my best to address that. I'm going to rely on Noah to follow up on anything I leave out. By and large, we leave that process to the neighborhood. The HPC, on the initial write of the guidelines, we usually ask for volunteers from the Commission to sit in with the neighborhood on writing those guidelines, and they do multiple drafts. I've been on a number of those. I think I have been the Commissioner who's been on most of those in the last decade, so you can put a lot of blame on me if you want. That said, I feel like my main job, when I'm listening to these neighborhoods talk about what they want for their neighborhood, is to let them know what they can do, what they can't do, what they need to do, and what they don't need to do. There are so many things that you don't need to regulate with guidelines, and I encourage every neighborhood to say, we don't care about that, if they don't care about that. I don't want any more guidelines than necessary. I like to keep them minimal. I don't like them to be, I have to, you know, make sure that they're not trying to circumvent planning and zoning, because a lot of neighborhoods, I think, take being an historic district as an opportunity to say, I don't like what the city is doing, I want to do something else. And we're like, I get that. And there are certain things you can do, but there are certain things you can't do, because the purview of the Historic Preservation Commission is limited, and I want them to understand what those limits are. So, you know, my role is, you know, I'm a bit of a bouncer, in that I, you know, I want to make sure they don't go too far off the rails. I want to make sure that their language is concise. I want to make sure that they're readable, so that when they come back to the HBC, we know what they're asking us to do. And clarity, conciseness, all of these things are incredibly important. But I leave everything to the neighborhood if I can possibly help it. I will say, I will say, this looks questionable, this language is unclear, I think you consider, you should consider this or consider that, but I am not going to ram-rob them into a certain- But I am not going to ramrod them into a certain position on what they want to do for their neighborhood, because it's their neighborhood. And I think, you know, one of the most important things I've felt as a Historic Preservation Commissioner over the last decade is that the power that a historic district has comes from the neighborhood. We do not like to enforce these things by fiat. We do not... We want them to be vested in what they're talking about. We want them to make their own rules. So as much as we can have that... Sorry. As much as we can have that happen, we do. And if I missed anything, Noah, chime in.
Maybe between responses, I'd like to just interject and redirect a little bit. That is helpful information, thank you. But I'm more interested in the procedural aspects. The neighborhood is not an entity, per se. There might be a neighborhood association. Those tend to represent some demographics or some people in certain types of housing more than others, for instance. There are a lot of challenges, and we don't really regulate, you know, whether those are run democratically, you know. There's... I've dug deep into this before and experienced it in a number of neighborhoods, so I have concerns about the process. So back to that, like procedurally, what has to happen for a neighborhood to choose to rewrite its guidelines? For instance, is it just a group of individuals who live in that neighborhood and get together and say, we're some volunteers, we care about this, we're going to rewrite them, we're going to propose it to the HPC, and then HPC approves it or not? Or is there something more formal than that? Like, that's the type of question I guess I'm looking to understand a little more deeply, if that's helpful. Thank you.
So there's really, in general, there will be two or three situations in which new guidelines are written up when a district is created, in which case it's usually going to be the people who recommend a district for designation, which is going to be people who own property in that district, and it may also include people who reside in that district. There's, at the end of a three-year period, as a conservation district, which, if some of you remember, there's an option in Indiana code to create a conservation district, which is sort of a historic district light, where rules are only applied really to demolition, new construction, moving buildings, and additions. So again, that's stuff that staff can't review. But at the end of a three-year period, there's a ballot that has to be sent out to property owners, at which point they send in a vote to the city saying, yes, we want to become a historic district, or no, we want to stay a conservation district. If the majority of people don't... If the majority of the property owners don't vote no to stay a conservation district, then historic district rules will have to be written up. And at that point, you know, that would also have to come from residents and property owners of the district. But, you know, oftentimes, these do come from neighborhood associations, which, again, like you were saying, Councilmember Flaherty, are separate from the city. So those aren't something that... They should have rules and guidelines, but they are sort of independent entities. There are also some districts that will say that they want a review every so often, like Elm Heights has written into their guidelines that they want a review at the end of 10 years of their district guidelines. And I believe they have written in that they want that done by members of the Neighborhood Association, and if that's not done, then by members of the Historic Preservation Commission. Right. And all of these would be subject to the same review process that Disoler was discussing.
Okay, thank you. Maybe just the smallest follow-up. The Elm Heights example is helpful, but if, in the absence of that, who initiates a rule rewrite? Is it the Neighborhood Association by default, even if it's not spoken to? Is it any collection of individuals? Is there some type of ballot, or have we not encountered that scenario? I guess I'm following up on this because it was mentioned by the chair that rewriting rules, for instance, is an option. And I'm curious, if that's not spoken to and the guidelines are ready, is that happening? How does it happen? I don't mean to take up the time. You can also follow up individually with me if I've taken too much, so thank you.
In some guidelines, it is specified that if a certain proportion of property owners initiate a ballot to change the guidelines, then that'll initiate the process again with the HPC for a rewrite. But that isn't something that's either in our statute or rules and procedures. So oftentimes, that does end up falling to how different historic districts want to self-govern. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I... This was actually my question, too, so I kind of maybe want to try to ask it again to see if... I guess from what you said, Sam, I got the impression that a group in the neighborhood could say, oh, we don't want to custom-fit windows. Can we look at our guidelines, for example, right? And like, can we look at them and do a rewrite or an edit? And so is there a procedure for that? For neighborhood residents to come together to say, we want to rewrite our guidelines without anything else making that happen? Does that make sense?
We don't have a consistent procedure for that, unless anybody else can think of any past instances.
It is neighborhood by neighborhood, and it is, you know, they are self-governing. But, you know, we are totally open to any individual neighborhood or historic district to come forth and rewrite their guidelines.
Could I add something? And maybe if there are public comments later, there are representatives from neighborhoods who could speak...
I think that's the first time he's spoken. Can you state your name for the record? Did he already... Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If there's... When there are public comments, there may be some people from neighborhoods who could speak to how they have evolved these guidelines. My experience over 30 years of this is that the people who generally initiate the designation come out of the neighborhoods. The commission doesn't go looking for neighborhoods to designate. It comes from the seat of the power that be in that neighborhood. Those neighborhoods have their own leadership rigors. I don't know what they all are, and I doubt if they're all the same. But the people who are the leaders in those neighborhoods are the ones who tend to come forward for designation. The extent to which they're taking public votes or have referendum at every move they make is, you know, I have no way of knowing that. But my sense from working with neighborhoods and to evolve guidelines is that they are representative people who have led the fight to be in a historic district. And they have, in my experience, always included the referenda in the neighborhoods that they work in. And once they design those guidelines, they take them back to the neighborhood for approval. Does everyone in the neighborhood participate? No. Will they ever? Absolutely no. But the people who do care the most about it tend to be the one who come forward to try to get the job done. We're responding pretty much to what they bring us. We're not going out and trying to get it to happen in a certain way. Okay, so it is... It isn't a perfect process, but as I said, the people in the neighborhoods would speak better to how they've done it than we could, probably.
Yeah, I mean, this conversation has addressed some of the things that I was concerned about, too, in terms of economics. And one of the... I don't necessarily want to, like, go backwards too far, but one of the definitions that's in our local code is a definition of economic hardship. But I couldn't actually find that anywhere in code that that's considered. And I feel like what I just heard was like, well, basically, economics aren't ever considered, and it's up to the neighborhood to consider it. And that's frankly sort of concerning, because if you have, you know, in any neighborhood, you're going to have varying levels of income and varying abilities to pay for things like new windows or repairing, you know, storm damage or other sorts of damage, like the porch example, or anything else that might happen. And so I guess the question is, you know, does that economic hardship concept actually appear somewhere in code? And if it doesn't, then why do we have that as a defined word in this chapter? And then, you know, is that ever considered when rendering a judgment? Like, when you guys get to decide something, like, you know, roof tiles and whether or not a roof tile is the right color or the right shape, do you ever go, oh, well, these roof tiles are very, very similar, but one is more historic and also costs three times as much. The other one probably looks the same from a distance. Does that, like, come into it at all? Does anybody want to answer that?
Yes.
Could you state your name?
Oh, sorry, Bernard Cross. Bernard Cross. There have been at least three situations that I can remember where the issues of cost has come up. Windows, roof tiles, as you mentioned. There was an issue where we were looking at, I think, roof tiles made up of a different material. And we actually formed a subcommittee to examine the feasibility of replacement materials that were in appearance, and I suspect in quality, sufficient enough to be a viable replacement. So there have been occasions where we have looked at replacement materials. And in those occasions, specifically because the person's concerned, have made a complaint, for want of a better word, that to replace with the original materials would be cost prohibitive.
So in those three situations that you can think of, where did you guys say, okay, the less expensive or the more attainable in terms of cost option is okay?
If my memory serves me, and please don't hold me to it, I can remember one where an allowance was made, and I think in the other, an allowance was not. And the petition was required to replace it with historically similar materials.
I'd like to address that a little bit further. I think there's nuance. I think it depends in large part on what district we're talking about, and also the level of historic importance of that particular structure. I think that the commission is willing to give a lot more latitude with contributing structures as opposed to notable or outstanding structures. So in large part, it depends on how important that building is and how stringent the guidelines of that particular neighborhood are. So there's latitude there, but... And when there is, we're happy to give it. And when there's not, we do toe the line.
I have another follow-up, too, about one of the other things. We were talking about the procedures of, like, rewriting the district guidelines. And so the neighborhoods themselves end up voting on the guidelines before it comes to you to vote on the guidelines. So if the majority of the neighbors voted on it, but it voted positively for it, but it was, say, relatively even split, does it ever occur to you guys to make them rewrite it? To, like, is there a required percentage, say, of neighborhood neighbors that you want to, like, buy into this? Or is it literally, like, one vote is enough? Because I could just imagine a super, super-duper split neighborhood, and maybe, in fact, we have them. So is there a requirement that, like, a minimum percentage of the neighborhood vote be positive before you guys approve their guidelines?
I think there's a, you know, there's a majority, there's a positive vote. And we do always encourage neighborhoods to go back and go back and go back. Because the more buy-in a neighborhood has, the better off they're going to be. I mean, we are not wanting to encourage, you know, contention within a neighborhood at the, you know, at the expense of having an historic district. That's not our mission.
Well, and I'm thinking about the rewrites, though, too.
Oh, the rewrites?
Yeah, because that's more, I mean, that was where the conversation kind of started, was, well, what about those rewrites? What if there's, you know, a homeowner that wants to replace their windows and can't afford? And so then says, hey, let's figure out how to rewrite these, and there's a really even split, or roughly even split with only...
The big issue that I've seen recently with rewrites is not having enough people involved in the rewrites. I think that, I mean, I'm...
So do you have a minimum requirement of participation, then, for rewriting?
I want them to be concise. I want them to be, you know, as far as how many people sign on to them, we rely on the neighborhood for that feedback, for how many people have signed on to them, how contentious they are. We don't, you know...
So there's not a written, kind of, in your guidelines, any kind of minimum standard of participation for neighborhoods to, like, a clear majority? Because there is a clear majority that people have to disagree with becoming a historic district.
That's true.
And I guess I'm... So is that a state guideline? That 51% have to disagree in writing, or is that something local?
Yes, that is state.
Okay, so it's like a negative kind of thing, we can't change it?
But in terms of the rewriting of the guidelines, that, again, is something that the neighborhoods, you know, they write into their guidelines or don't, and many don't. So we, you know, we...
But in terms of process, then, at our level, just like a quick yes or no answer? So we do not require any kind of...
No, we do not require that, as far as I'm aware.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's talk about, in the event of someone can't afford to make that repair, is anyone aware of any state or federal grants that would enable them to do so? Or how could the city better support people to make those repairs?
So I went over a bit of the incentives that are available specifically for historic preservation in the city of Bloomington. They do come with some limitations. For example, the Bloomington Urban Enterprise Association has a grant that's available to nonprofits and businesses within the Bloomington Urban Enterprise Zone, which roughly comprises of downtown. You know, it's like all funds, it's a limited fund. But that is up to $10,000 per application, per facade. So that's, you know, not chump change when it comes for taking on some major projects. The Bloomington Department of Housing and Neighborhood Development also has some grant programs for homeowners. Those are mostly for life safety and essential repairs. I think one thing that would be... Or a couple of things that would be particularly helpful that I've heard from people in the commission are, you know, funds available for repairs in historic districts. And then also having more resources out there on the city website about how to conduct repairs and how to find, you know, qualified repair people for projects that, you know, take more specialized work. You know, I've since added to the historic Bloomington page on the website a link to a number of materials from the National Park Service about how to conduct repairs, retrofits, and other kinds of adaptations to historic buildings. But if there's some way that the city can also help put people in touch with local resources, I think that would be incredibly helpful. As far as opportunities for homeowners, the state of India had... The state of Indiana has a tax credit program for homeowners who own properties in state or nationally-registered historic districts, which qualify if they're, you know, meet a... And Duncan may know this more specifically, but if the cost of the repairs... more specifically, but if the cost of the repairs meets a certain threshold, they can get a tax credit in exchange for conducting them, and that's done through the state DNR.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on the changing of the guidelines. I've got a concrete example from the Garden Hill Historic District. It's in their guidelines, one of the sections at the very end, it's the process for how you would actually rewrite. And so I'll just read it out for you. "If changes are desired by the, in the guidelines, they shall be drafted by the Garden Hill Historic District. The neighborhood organization shall report its findings to the Historic Preservation Commission. All property owners in the district shall be notified of the proposed changes in the guidelines. They will be given copies of the proposed new guidelines and notice of the time and place of a public hearing on the proposal. The neighborhood organization shall provide a system whereby all property owners have the opportunity to cast a vote on the proposal. If 51% or more of the ballots returned approved the changes, the new guidelines are forwarded to the commission for discussion and approval."
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Jeremy. It's a bit of a bummer, that voting system, right? Because that's the same voting system that changes a conservation district to a historic district, that 51% of actual property owners have to vote against it, where you won't even, you'll never, ever even, like, get 50% of property owners voting, pretty much. I mean, maybe Elm Heights, but it's, it's...
Correct.
So those guidelines, the procedure changes even honestly set up to fail.
Well, I think for this one, to revise, it's 51% of ballots returned approved the changes. So I think what you're talking about is the change from the conservation district to a historic district.
51% have to come back approving it, of all property owners?
No.
Just the vote?
No.
Oh, great, okay, that is, great. That's a regular vote, that's a regular way to vote.
Yeah.
Except, okay, great, okay. Do you all ever, I'm just gonna keep going, do you all ever take, like, best practices, then, from, like, Garden Hill and suggest them in other guidelines?
Yes.
So, like, something, something like that could be added to potentially all the districts?
Yeah.
We would not complain at all about that.
And a lot of the districts at the end will have procedures for, here's how we change our guidelines.
Yeah. And we, we often, when a new district is proposed, we'll say, look at this guy, look at this district, look at that, and we give them a lot of material to look at, so we can't force them to accept any of it, but we'll put it out there.
And for anyone listening, and also just for anyone who might not know, all 13 of the historic preservation districts' guidelines can be found on our city website. If you look up Bloomington Historic Preservation Districts, they're all linked together, and each one is about 20 to 30 pages. And it's clear, but it's dense. Okay. I had a constituent reach out to me and ask about how demolition through neglect comes into play, and how we might safeguard against that. So I don't know that much about that, but I'm, I'm hoping that some of the commissioners can share their experience with it.
I think this is something that the commission has been struggling to address. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, because you've been here longer than...
Forever.
Forever. I mean, we're, we understand preservation, but maintenance and lack thereof, and the enforcement of lack of maintenance is something that we are still wrapping our heads around. That said, it is one of the two main responsibilities of the commission, and it is incredibly important, because if you don't maintain it, it's going to go away. And there have been multiple properties that have just decayed through intentional neglect and have been allowed to be demolished, and that's not okay. And I am hoping, you know, this is something I, you know, I'm beating the dead horse, right? This is something I, most every meeting, try to talk about, try to bring up, try to say, which properties are endangered? How do we fix this? And, you know, we are under the umbrella of hand, and they have eyes out on the street, but we need more eyes out on the street, and we need more people to come and say, this property is endangered, this is an issue. Because we can't look at everything, but it is vitally important that we address these things, and we address them in a timely fashion so that we can catch them before they go too far and before they are lost. And we've already lost multiple properties through inaction, and that lies at the feet of the commission.
Well, I have a suggestion. We could kind of do a social media campaign for, if, if someone notices in their neighborhood that a house is not falling apart, but, you know, on, on the verge, perhaps they could submit a U-report, and, and that's an anonymous way to do things, that might work?
I have actually asked for that to be added to the city website, and that has not happened yet, but if you have any, you know, influence there, I would greatly appreciate getting that up there.
I'll see what I can do.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to add a little more about demolition in historic districts and demolition by neglect. So generally, deterioration resulting from neglect by the owner over time is not considered as a factor when the commission votes to approve a demolition. That being said, there are often instances in historic, or occasionally instances in historic districts where a property is required by a new owner who cannot put it, or demonstrates that they cannot put it to a reasonable economic use, in which case it may be demolished. This can also happen in the case of disasters where a building is damaged to the point that, you know, it would, there's, again, going back to the definition of hardship, no reasonable economic use from that building. There is also a process in state and local code for demolitions of buildings failing to receive certificates of appropriateness. It's a somewhat long process that basically tries to see if there's an opportunity for somebody else to acquire the property who may be able to repair it. I have not seen that come up before. I don't know if somebody's been on the commission for longer, has.
It has come up. You know, this is a really, I, I really appreciate this forum, but this, some of these issues are so complex from the standpoint of somebody who's practicing historic preservation over a lifetime, basically, that I, I, I fear that we get, we're getting simple answers. Neglect is a strategy on the part of many people who want to either get rid of that property in order to supplant it with something from which they can make more money, or they simply can't afford to do anything about it, and they abandon the property. We, we don't have that problem as much as we used to, because frankly, people in Bloomington have gotten wealthier and wealthier, and property values have gone up and up, and it's, it's much less of a strategy, let's say, than it would be in a big city where whole buildings and whole blocks of buildings are abandoned simply because you can't pay the taxes on them anymore. That, that's neglect, but it's not, who, who's going to place the blame on that person? And a lot of the discussion so far has been about cost and about the sort of, the difficulty of maintenance, which is a real difficulty, particularly if you're economically stressed. And if you're economically stressed and you're living in a historic district, you know, the implication seems to be that it's even a greater stress, but I, I don't find that that's actually true. All, almost all the applicant, I mean, we, we evaluate, adjudicate, if you will, requests for changes to property that come directly from the, from the owner of the property. If somebody wants to, we're not going out to people and saying, you need to change your windows, and you're going to have to spend this much. People are coming to us and saying, we would like to change out all of our windows, and our guidelines say, if your windows are in good shape and they're the original fabric, you should keep them. So now we're up against this, somebody wants a brand-new product, and we're supposed to protect the historic product. It's, it's a much more complex interaction than just what's it going to cost. We're, we're trying to maintain and protect, you know, historic meaning in a community so that people can appreciate it, and because it's considered in the public welfare to do that, that's why we're regulators, that's why we have police power. And so we're, it's, it's not a, it's not just a matter of, does it cost more? It costs more every year to maintain your house. You know, if you've maintained one for any period of time, you know that this is true. And so we, you know, we don't, we don't adjudicate general maintenance for that, mainly for that reason, that we're not going to, we don't care when or how you clean your gutters, but if you're going to have, if you don't, if, if you neglect your gutters and you're going to have to change them, that's where we come in. So it's, it's, it's a very convoluted issue they're trying to, where you're trying to regulate some people for a standard that is a, is a social and cultural standard that has been set. These ordinances weren't written by us, they were written by all of us. And so we're in the unfortunate, if you will, position of having to work with our neighbors and not make them mad, and still take care of the things that the public has told us we should be taking care of. So I would say, of all my years on the commission, and I've been active on it since the nine, early 90s, I can't count on one hand the number of people who have gone out of the room mad. Are they, did they have an expense they didn't expect? Maybe. But mostly people we help do, take care of their property in the best way that we know how to. That, that's, that's our success. And so I, I, I'm confident that you get complaints from your constituents, and I'm, I'm sure that they may have things to complain about, but in general, that's not my impression of how well this works. I think it works really well. Could, could the guideline process be more democratic? Probably, and that's really up to the neighborhoods who are conducting it. But we don't control the cost of things, and we don't make people replicate historic fabric. That's just not ever done, that's not in the code. Sorry, I just, you know, I just felt like I was getting down to brass tacks when nobody had talked about the whole picture.
Yeah, I, I can understand that. I wanted to follow up on what Councilmember Zulik was mentioning, that, you know, could there be some way to report if, if a home or a house in a historic district is being neglected, you know, and is, is falling into disrepair? But what legal authority does the city actually have to do anything if that's the case? Or would it just be the power of persuasion to talk to the property owner and try to get them to be nice?
In the historic commission's Rules and Guidelines document, there's Article 7 Maintenance that talks about neglect and/or lack of care. And so it gives a process for if, you know, we receive a report, then it lays out four, you know, three steps for then what would happen, where the commission would contact the property owner, they would have 21 days to respond, they can then appear before the commission to present plans or evidence of upkeep and make an argument that, no, we actually are trying to maintain it, and then the commission would consider the evidence, and if they find that the building's condition constitutes a threat to the historic fabric of an area where the building is located, and move forward, then the commission can forward the findings to the city's legal department for appropriate legal action, and that is what it says.
Okay, thank you. Where are you reading that from? I'm sorry.
This is the, it's on the Historic Preservation Commission's website, and it's the Rules and Procedures.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell, thank you for sharing that experience. Other commissioners, would you like to share anything about your experience on the commission or your approach to historic preservation?
If you want, if, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, don't.
I was going to say, I've, I've said, I've asked this before in front of city council meetings, but if you want to create incentives to help people restore their historic homes, please do, because that's really where you come in. That's not something that we can do. So if, if you, if that's a concern, and, and I don't, I don't see why it wouldn't be, it's in your hands.
Thank you. Commissioner Duffy?
Yes, Karen Duffy. I can also talk as someone, before I was on the commission, I was a volunteer in my neighborhood who worked on guidelines, and we absolutely made it as democratic as we could. We invited over and over again, please join our committee, and, you know, what it's like to try to get people to join a committee. People who are willing to work will join, and it's a small number, but we, we got 10, and they represented different points of view. We, we welcomed that, we wanted that, we incorporated those different points of view. And also, as Sam said, there's always a person from the commission who comes when you're working on the guidelines to make, to keep you on track, and, you know, basically kind of help you do what you're supposed to be doing. And in our case, we were told, please do consider, we were told we had to do it, but seriously consider adding at the end a procedure for revising the guidelines, so, and I'm sure that's done in other neighborhoods, too. Sam was our advisor, and he, he definitely brought that to our attention. So then, as a member of the committee, I'm not a voting member, I'm an advisory committee member, but I can back up what Duncan said. I've seen very few people upset with what they, their experience at the, at the commission. I've also seen examples or instances where the commission has saved people money in terms of these costs by, basically, some contractor has told them they have to do this or that, and the commission has said, well, you know, you can actually, there's a simpler solution here, and suggested a simpler and much less costly solution. So just to add that, it does happen that way as well.
Ever so often, we get persons who, usually because they've committed some violation, express ignorance of, usually at the time when they purchase their property that it's in a historic district. I would like to see a system set up, something more formalized. I, I know that there, you know, when deeds are recorded or titles are recorded, at some level during the purchase process, that information is given to that homeowner, and that information should include the responsibilities that that owner would be expected to live up to, now being the owner of historic property. I don't think that there is a system in place to formally notify a homeowner that the property that they're now purchasing or trans, you know, being the recipient of a transfer is in a historic district, and I believe that we could do something about that. So ignorance will no longer be an excuse.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Sandweiss, do you have any suggestions on what we can do?
I'd definitely like to second what Commissioner Cross said. You know, finding ways to better notify people when or before they acquire a property, because, you know, that's... you know, that's also an issue for whoever's selling the property, because it can become a legal liability if somebody's not informed about a condition about a property that they own by the person that they purchased it from. I also just wanted to add that, as of this year, I believe 90% of the COAs that we've received have been approved by the commission or by staff, and that statistic is more or less in keeping with other cities that I have been looking at. And again, part of what that is, is that people will look to the guidelines first and then come to the commission, generally when they have a good idea of something that they want that they think is going to pass.
Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on Commissioner Cross's comments. At the conference that I mentioned I went to recently, Fort Wayne did a presentation on all the different ways in which they've implemented to notify people that they have historic homes, and then also so like the, the city knows when those properties are sold. And so there's a good way that they can facilitate a, a back and forth. And then I also think there's some updates that are either been implemented or going to be implemented on real estate disclosure forms, where there's a section where I think you have to say it's a historic home or not. And so that can create issues if, you know, the seller or the real estate agents aren't marking those boxes. But I was going to talk about that at our next commission meeting. So, I agree.
Just want to give other commissioners the opportunity, if they would like to share anything?
I would like to talk about something that doesn't work very well. We have under, in our planning department, we have an agreement on, on the demolition delay ordinance, that anybody who comes in and requests a demolition permit on a structure or building that is in the historic survey automatically gets that request for demolition reviewed by the Preservation Commission. So all of the buildings that are in our survey, which are not all, not, not the districts, but ones that are considered eligible to be historic districts, so it's hundreds more, are, are, if they're, if, if their owners request demolition, we're supposed to review it. We only really have two options. One is to let the building go to demolition, or send it to council to designate it as a historic district. Most of these buildings, I'd say, if somebody can correct me, are probably in the contributing category, would be in the contributing category, not the outstanding or the notable category. So they're not immediately, it's not immediately obvious that they would be eligible for historic districting. They may be significant as in adding to the street front of their neighborhood, or they may be, you know, they may be old enough, but they may just not be meaningful enough to, to warrant your designation, because you're the body that designates ultimately. And also, we get so many demolition requests now. When I first started in this regulatory business, all the requests for demolition were, were partial. Somebody needed to fix a porch, or take out a dormer, or replace some doors, or, now 99% of them are for full demolition. And that's all because of pressure on the real estate. And we can't justify sending every one of those that comes into us to you for designation, that's all you'd be doing, is turning, turning them all down probably, but, you know. But we're, we're somewhat overwhelmed by demolition requests, which, when we, when we initiated the demolition ordinance 20, 25 years ago, we never anticipated this kind of pressure on the real estate in every neighborhood. And, and as you know, downtown and on the outskirts as well. So, we have to almost by default close our eyes and say, go ahead. And I would say, we meet, we meet every, we meet two week, two times every month, and I don't know, Noah, on average, we have four or five demolition requests per meeting. That's probably the average, certainly not the maximum. And virtually all of them go to demolition. So you do, you do the math. We're demolishing hundreds of perfectly good buildings to, you know, reevaluate the real estate on the part of the owner. That's basically what's happening.
So, oh, go right ahead.
And just let me conclude. So, so that's a problem, because we're losing, if you, if you, as I do, believe in something called sustainability, it's a completely unsustainable situation where we are destroying perfectly good fabric, historic or not, perfectly good buildings, just to reevaluate the real estate. And it's moving the ownership of our real estate out of our hands, and it's, it's destroying tracts of neighborhoods, piece by piece.
Melody Duesner from Historic Preservation, and I just wanted to jump in here, because I felt like this is something that I could add a little bit to. I am a brand-new commissioner. I started in February, and this is my absolute least favorite part of the job, is having to vote on these demolition requests. And I say that especially as someone who has not managed to become a homeowner in Bloomington. I can't afford to own a home. And so, watching house, small house after small house disappear that way, and, yeah, the, the lack of sustainability with that kind of constant destruction, but that's really been, that's been a real sore spot for me. And I hope we can continue to work toward ways to address this that also recognize kind of the quality of smaller homes that may not be architecturally super, super unique, and they may not have belonged to somebody really famous, but in fact, they're more characteristic of Bloomington because they belong to ordinary folks who lived here and worked here. And how do we keep those from, you know, how do we recognize those as worth preserving? Right now, we don't have a tool really for that category, and so I think a lot of us would really like to see one.
I want to say something that I meant to say at the beginning is, thank you. We've been trying, we've been asking to meet with you all for over a decade, and I am so grateful that we're having this conversation now. I think that the HPC and the Common Council has a number of overlapping goals, and one of them, I think Commissioner Duesner just mentioned, and that's affordable housing. I think some of the things that we do on the commission and with zoning are at odds to, how do we make more affordable housing for, and entry-level housing for people? And these old houses that are small and in these neighborhoods that are, you know, not exactly downtown, those are prime real estate for, you know, new home buyers, but they're also, because of zoning in some cases, prime real estate for developers who want to come in and tear these down and build larger duplexes and triplexes and multifamily, multifamily housing. So I think taking a hard look at the housing stock that we have and evaluating that in terms of, what do we have, what's sustainable, what's affordable, and where do we want to grow, is something that is incredibly important. And I think the, the other issue I wanted to touch on was, this commission has a number of different viewpoints. I think we work really well together. I think we come from a lot of different backgrounds. And I think we desperately need your support. We are, I'm going to make my plug, which I made to you earlier. We are struggling to make quorum. So the quicker you can get the mayor's office to give you candidates and approve them and get us a full slate of voting members, we would be so grateful for that. So whatever you can do to make that happen, thank you.
Oh, go ahead. Are there parts of Bloomington that are particularly hard-hit by these demolitions that you could speak to?
There is a, there's a, there are some members in the audience, I think, who will speak to that during public comment, but there are, you know, there are neighborhoods that are ripe for development. There's a neighborhood called Cottage Grove, which is west of campus, east of college, sort of around 11th, 12th. Thank you. That's one. I think Bryan Park, south of Bryan Park is another one. That's going to come up anytime soon. Daniel, chime in.
The closer to IU, the better.
Yeah. Anything close to IU, especially around the stadium. And I think there are neighborhoods that are actually pretty well self-regulating, like, you know, we kicked up Green Acres six, eight months ago. And I think, I mean, I was a dissenting vote on sending that up, but I think that's actually one that has a very thin slice of multifamily zone, but it's doing pretty well self-regulating at the moment. But, you know, anything around the, the university is at risk, both from developers and in some ways from the university. I mean, you look at what happened in Elm Heights a couple of years ago, where the Jacobs family bought up a bunch of houses in Elm Heights and wanted to turn it into a center in the middle of a neighborhood. That's a problem.
If I may add my voice to the previous three commissioners who are speaking about demolition delays. I've lived in Bloomington for 10 years, and I think the last eight, I've lived in one historic district or another. I loved old houses, and the idea of buying a cookie cutter, you know, mass-produced house in a subdivision is an absolute nightmare. I've renovated a few, simply because I like it and I need a hobby. So, it's an expensive hobby. Very expensive hobby. But again, I share my commissioners' distress in having to vote to send to demolition a number of these perfectly good houses. What you would also find, and, and I think, in my experience, certainly within the last five years or so, one of the motivators for communities to seek historic districting is to protect these neighborhoods from developers, because they like their neighborhoods, they like the, the character of these neighborhoods that they live in. And even one multifamily 25-unit apartment building can just change the entire character of, of, of the community in which they live. And it is unfortunate that that is the process that they are left with, to protect their neighborhoods. So, I would like to see more protection being afforded to these neighborhoods that we're speaking of, primarily because of the historic, the contribution that they make to our broader Bloomington community. I believe that that's sufficient. And like Duncan said, you know, a, a number of these buildings aren't individually unique, but as a collection, as a group, they make the neighborhood unique. And you can't keep cutting pieces off of it, then you, you won't have a neighborhood of any character anymore.
Hey, I was actually just going to make a suggestion. I don't know if you're planning on three minutes per person, but that would only be seven people in a, right? I don't know if you want to like go to public comment and then maybe come back if there's more time, but I don't know, just a suggestion.
Yeah, absolutely. I do just want to wrap up that part real quick. So what I'm hearing from many of you is that we're looking for an alternative to approval of demolition or designation by council. Okay. I will put that down as an action item. Thank you. If anyone doesn't have any burning questions or comments to make.
Can I say something about membership?
Please do.
The first thing on our list was qualifications for, of commissioners, and I don't think we ever talked about it. I think you skipped it over and started with something else, but I've been a commissioner, a voting and advisory member off and on for, like I said, since the early 1990s. And I helped write the ordinance that we're working with now, and I'm pretty proud of it. I think it's one of the best ones in the state. And I think it functions largely as we intended it to. But the thing that, as, and Sam alluded to this, not only do we need rapid reappointments, but we need qualified reappointments. And when we wrote the ordinance in Chapter 2 of the Bloomington Code, we, we put under the composition of the commission this sentence. "The membership shall include individual members with demonstrated expertise in historic preservation activities. To the extent available in the community, the commission shall include professional members from the disciplines of architecture, history, architectural history, preservation planning, archaeology, or other historic preservation-related disciplines, such as urban planning, American studies, art history, American civilization, cultural geography and cultural anthropology." We have a lot of people with these qualifications in this community, and the better the commission is, and the, and the better it meets these standards, the, the better it functions. And I, I've been on some pretty lame ones and some really great ones. And, you know, consistent, we're, we're pretty consistent, but it really helps to have qualified members. And, and, you know, as far as I'm concerned, everybody at this table is qualified. But it hasn't always been that way. And there are, you know, we are suggesting a standard by which these, these appointments can be made. And so, please pay attention to it.
Yes, absolutely. And for anyone listening who would like to apply, if you just look up Bloomington Boards and Commissions, there is a form for just any board or commission. Make sure that you click Historic Preservation and talk about some of those qualifications that our lovely Commissioner Campbell just mentioned. With that, I think we can move on to public comment, and we'll start in chambers. Will, our public comment section will be...
Actually, do we want to let people sit down at that chair?
Oh.
And public comment, so then they're part of the circle.
Absolutely.
So, so if you, if you want to make a public comment in chambers, there's a chair down here at the end, and there's a microphone right there next to Mr. Hackett. So if you want to make your way from the podium down there, and you can sit at the table, ma'am.
Do you want?
Yes. You can. So if you're in chambers and you would like to make a public comment, you can make your way to that chair. Please introduce yourself for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes. And if you are online right now, if you could raise your hand using the reactions tab or send a chat message to the host.
Sign in.
Oh, yes. And, and there should be a sign-in sheet right there too, if you want to sign in for your public comment as well, please.
Are you ready?
Is the timer ready?
How much time?
Three minutes.
Okay, I'm going to talk real fast. I'm from McDowell Gardens. My name is Elizabeth Cox Ash, and I've been involved with historic preservation for over 30 years. I was one of the architects that did Bloomington's first historic conservation district, which was McDowell Gardens. And we selected our guidelines committee based on the population. We had 12 members. Three of them were landlords, three of them were homeowners, and three of them were business owners. That's how we did our guidelines initially. When we were elevated to full historic district in 2014, again, we looked at our population to select who would be on our committee for our guidelines, and we had more homeowners, so we had more homeowners there. But we also had landlords, business owners, and homeowners. We took everyone's ideas and wrote them all up, and... And as far as what you had done in the past, you had drafts. And we had at least 20 drafts both times. And we put them up to a vote, and that's how we did our things. Our historic, anytime anyone wants changes, want a CFA, they talk to our executive committee. And then we get them on our neighborhood association meeting. And we meet, not every month, but when we do meet, whoever shows up, then we look at what the homeowner is wanting to do, and then we decide and put it up to a vote. That's just how our neighborhood does things. We are known as historic light, and that's because we're not as strict as some of the neighborhoods. We kind of look at whoever the homeowner is, this is their cost, so this is their, their expense, and so we give them a lot of latitude. What makes Bloomington unique? Our kit homes, our stonemason homes, these are unique. I've been kind of looking around at other places throughout Indiana, throughout the Midwest, and each area reflects what the homeowners built. So if we destroy these historic homes, we're destroying what makes Bloomington unique. Bloomington is not Fort Wayne. It's not Auburn, Indiana. It's not Indianapolis. Each place looks different. So please, whatever is decided, please keep Bloomington unique. That's it.
Thank you for your comment. Has anybody raised a hand on Zoom wanting to comment?
Yes, we have.
Okay, let's take one of the comments from Zoom, and in the meantime, people, a new person can come on over and sit in the in-chambers comment seat.
Richard Lewis, you can unmute yourself and provide your comment.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. My name is Richard Lewis. I live in the Prospect Hill neighborhood, where similar to McDowell Gardens, we became a conservation district in 2008, voted to renew that in 2011, but then through a discussion between a state attorney and a city attorney, we were told no, we didn't qualify to renew because of the balloting, there were different interpretations. So we were kind of thrust into the position of becoming an historic district. So in early 2014, we formed our own new guidelines committee to work on the parts migrating from a conservation district to an historic district. We were fortunate that we had 15 volunteers to serve on that committee, which out of a neighborhood of maybe 400 households was, you know, a fair, a fair turnout and representative from people who were very hardline preservationists to people who wanted to be as hands-off as possible. I ended up being the chair of that committee, and I am grateful that we, all 15 of us, were able to reach consensus on every item we talked about, which was great to really tool things and forge things together in our committee meetings. And then we were ratified in fall of 2014 as an historic district. And similar to what Elizabeth said, we're sort of an historic light, because we have such a range of economies in our neighborhood, and we want people to be able to make practical renovations without undue hurdles. And much like McDowell Gardens and some of the others, most of our neighborhood has houses that qualify as contributing, very few outstanding, very few notable. So for us, it's, it's a sense of preserving a streetscape, so that you can look down a street and see a similar streetscape to what would have been there in the 19 teens or twenties. But that still allows people to add on to their homes, you know, building up or out and back, because we primarily want to preserve that publicway facade that contributes to the streetscape and its architectural character. Our design review committee, I think, has worked very well with homeowners in the neighborhood. Just last week, the HPC approved a new, an entirely new construction in our neighborhood that was on a lot that had been vacant for a number of years. And we, our sign review committee, which does not have the power to approve or deny something just to make recommendations and, and hopefully assist the homeowner, we also made our recommendation for that to move forward. So it's, it's nice to know that, you know, we can partner with homeowners in our, in our communities, sometimes make suggestions that make their lives easier or more practical or more aesthetic. And I got to say, just looking at the screen here, it is so great to see a conversation table with city council and the HPC together. So I do thank all of you and salute you for, for bringing this conversation together. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'm coming back to chamber. Please, please come over and sit in the chair if you want to make a comment, sir. Like, yes, you. So please sign in and then state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
I'm Bill Vouse. I'm with the Near West Side Neighborhood Association. I've lived in the neighborhood for over half a century. And ours was, is one of the oldest neighborhoods in town and also one of the newest historic It's also was developed as affordable housing, you know, back over 100 years ago. And when we were developing our guidelines, we were very careful to make sure that we were not making the preservation of our neighborhood unaffordable. We do not require particular materials in almost all cases. I think the only thing we specify is no vinyl siding. I would even go for vinyl siding, but that's not, was not the, the side of, you know, the group, the committee's decision. I was on the, the committee that developed the guidelines as one of the commissioners here. And before the changes in zoning came up, I never got requests to buy property, my property unsolicited. I have, in addition to my own residence, two rental properties in, in the immediate vicinity. And the neighborhood was always very diverse. We were the only neighborhood that black residents could buy our own homes in for about half a century, the first half of the 20th century. We've also had diversity in the types of housing. There's always been a scattering of multifamily in among our single-family small homes and a few large homes. When the proposal for zoning changes happened, I started getting unsolicited requests in the mail and on the phone from developers wanting to buy my property. When that was defeated several years ago, the request stopped. When it came up again, it started again, and I get them on a regular basis now. These are people who do not live in the neighborhood, they don't even live in Bloomington, although they often give Bloomington addresses. If you check out, you find out they're from somewhere else, who really are interested in turning this into high-density rental housing that will cost more than the rents that I'm charging for my tenants and will actually be a detriment to affordable housing in Bloomington. So the, the use of our neighborhood historic preservation commission is, I believe, actually making a housing more affordable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you could make sure to sign in, that would be great. If there are other people in chambers who would like to make a comment, we're going to go ahead and take the, one of the ones from online. And then while that's happening, we can do a chair switch in chambers. So let's go ahead and go to that second online commenter. When you're unmuted, please state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Wendy Greshd, and I live in Elm Heights, in the same house that I grew up in. Moved here in 1963. Pardon me, I'm just parking my car, I was driving. Yeah, I, I've been happy for the historic designation in Elm Heights because it has helped to slow down a little bit the rental creep, which has kind of gone already past me. But I, I, I keep track of rentals, rental prices, rentals, I don't own any rentals, but, but the, what I see is that older homes, smaller homes, existing homes especially, are renting for not very much. And when, when a home is demolished, when another property is built, whatever, it's, it's not something that can ever, you know, when it's either plexed or when it's done something like that, which is easier to do, of course, without the, without the historic commission. And I have seen the same thing, that they, that they are considerably more expensive. You know, when houses are, those small houses are demolished to make way for a bigger rental or for a bigger whatever, they can no longer be owned, and it removes really important housing from Bloomington. And I think what I've seen is that the newer-built rental properties are inherently unaffordable and no longer good for owner occupation. And I, I, I think it's important to have attainable housing for families, for working people, and that is our existing housing. You know, what I've seen is that when other housing is, when they've been demolished, other housing is built, each unit will cost more than the original house. A one-bedroom will cost more than the original house. I also wanted to ask about a rental agency that is buying up homes in my area and historic homes as well, a large federal just around the corner from me, beautiful brick, brick federal, really good shape, windows were in good shape, everything was in good shape. They added, they immediately changed all the windows, they're now nylon. They, they redid a lot of the, you know, they added two bathrooms, two and a half bathrooms, I think, which are not, which we couldn't find any permits for. And I'm wondering, how, how do they get away with this? How is that possible that, that doesn't get, somehow flies under the radar or something? I'm just, I'm just a little concerned that that is, that students like, this is a person that rents to a lot of sororities, a lot of things like that, and that students like new and landlords like easy. And I think that's something that needs to be considered when, you know, there needs to be some kind of oversight for when rental, rental landlords buy up historic homes.
Thank you. Your, your time is up. Thank you for your comments.
Yep. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and go here in chambers. Maybe you've already signed in. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Thank you, Madam President. This is Christopher M. Gee, Sunny Slope resident and a employee at the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilman Ruzulik for putting this on. I've learned quite a bit. And Commissioner Cross, who's taken my phone calls and questions on historic preservation quite a few times. I am not even an expert or remote in that, I'm not even good at self-preservation. But a couple of things I have noticed is that all architecture is not created equal, at least on the eye of the beholder. And a lot of the examples we've seen so far have been like 1920s, 1930s. But when you start creeping into like 1960, the architecture, I'm going to use what I heard as in council chambers, I don't know, two years ago, with the CVS building, and then had across the street was the old National Building, which is the posh hotel they used to shell, built around 1960. And I'm thinking, maybe keep one of those, but not both as architectural representation. This is kind of the balance, I think, it's important that the, the preservation commission keeps in mind. I live in Sunny Slope, and I'm thinking about the character of it, and I'm like, well, if you demolish some of these, it's not the same as some of these very quaint, working-class homes you see more in the center core than, say, the south side. And so as we try to increase our population and probably going to be confined to our current boundaries, we have to make some of these sort of trade-offs. I don't know what they are. I'm not, I don't have an art history background to make any sort of assessments on this, but we have to sort of look at this on what we want to keep and what we don't, and some of it, not all of the architecture, I don't think, at least aesthetically, from my point of view, is created equal. And it's something that I think the preservation commission, I hope, keeps in mind, that not everything has to be kept forever. Having a represented, representation of this architecture style might be enough to keep some of the history, but not all of it. Anyway, I thank you for your time, and I thank you for an excellent discussion tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping time, even though the timer is not up on the screen right now. Do we have anybody else on Zoom that would like to make a comment? Okay, we have another Zoom commenter, so yep, I see somebody else coming in chambers. So while they're getting settled, let's go ahead and take that Zoom commenter. If you could introduce yourself for the record when you're unmuted, and then you'll have up to three minutes. Is our timer going to go back on again?
On again.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. My name is Jeff Richardson. Thank you so much for doing this this evening, and I've learned a lot. I live in a 1950 house, a limestone ranch in Elm Heights. We, I'm happy to say that our neighbors, we have some beautiful homes next to us. We've had three new neighbors just move in within the last few months. They all have kids, so I know there's an image of Elm Heights aging rapidly. There are some of us that are elderly, but we have a lot of kids now in the neighborhood and more on the way. And so that's very exciting. One of the things that concerns me is, in some circles, this discussion, not tonight, but generally, about historic homes and the preservation thereof, is somehow people who are either for preservation and therefore anti any kind of affordable housing, and that there's two camps. And in fact, I think most of the people that I know of here, we had a neighborhood gathering the other day with about 100 people show up pretty spontaneously, we're all concerned about affordable housing. And we, in fact, I'm living that belief in converting our basement into a studio apartment. I'm happy to say we didn't need the money, but we knew that people needed housing. And so we converted our basement into a studio apartment, and we've had, other neighbors have done the same. We've, just down the street, we have an ADU and others underway, and so I think we get it. But, so I'm just arguing that both can be true. You can want to preserve some of the integrity, the beautiful history of our neighborhood and other older parts of the city, and be for affordable housing. I will note that what was said earlier about some of the older houses going to ruin, especially with elderly people not able to keep them up, and we have a good example of that on First and Henderson. I'm not getting into the debate about whether the house should have been turned into a duplex or not. I, I think frankly, that's fine, but I do think that's a prime example of someone who probably an intervention would have helped keep that house in good shape, and it may or may not have been demolished in the long run. I basically feel that we have a lot that draws people to Bloomington. Having historic district and historic home was one of the reasons we bought in this neighborhood. We love Bloomington. We love IU. We love being here. And part of the reason for that is, is the beauty of, of these neighborhoods and the welcoming and loving character of these neighborhoods. So thanks for listening, and thanks for doing this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Let's go ahead here in chambers. Hopefully you've signed in, state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, I'm John Butler, and I'm in the potential Cottage Grove Historic Conservation Area. I want to address three things. First of all, you may wonder why people would want to create a historic conservation area, why property owners would seek out an extra set of rules that they would have to live under. And I think the answer is very simple. It's stability. Our neighborhood is facing destruction. We are under threat from every direction. We currently have four houses that have been slated for demolition, and this is a group of about 100 houses. So, and this is just right now. Surrounding us, houses are being taken down every week. And when I attend these historic preservation committee meetings, the houses that are being voted on are houses that I know. So the reason is stability. We don't want to see the destruction of our neighborhood. Number two, you've talked a lot about affordability, and as homeowners, we don't want to make things more expensive. And that's why we're looking towards a preservation light model, where we attempt to preserve the neighborhood without pushing forward undue costs onto the people in the neighborhood. Finally, there's an affordability issue that goes beyond just repairing your-- Finally, there's an affordability issue that goes beyond just repairing your houses. I'll just speak directly to our neighborhood. When a house is torn down, it's usually getting about $1,000 to $1,100 per bedroom per month. It is being replaced by a structure, and I'm not going to say house, by a structure which is getting about $2,000 per bedroom per month. These more structures that are being built, we're not creating affordable housing. Actually, we're doing the opposite. We're destroying affordable housing. And, you know, there's a lot of people in Bloomington who are getting pretty upset about the way these zoning laws have affected their neighborhoods and their chances of ever owning a home. We're competing with people from across the state, investors and developers, just to be able to buy a home in our own community. And, you know, the Historic Preservation Commission deals with these demolition requests all the time. I don't know if the city council is aware of the sort of scale of this problem, this housing crisis that's affecting the state and the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else on Zoom? Okay, there's nobody else on Zoom. Is there anybody else in chambers who would like to make a public comment tonight? Go ahead and make your way, yep. Somebody, just be like upfront and assertive and come and sit in the seat and sign in and then state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Matt Seddon, proud Bloomington resident, former member, voting member, advisory member of the HPC, former deputy state historic preservation officer for Utah, and archaeologist and various, interested in old things. Listening, I wasn't going to comment, I was just going to listen, but I can't help myself. Thinking about the time I spent on the commission and listening tonight, I kind of hear four things that I think are, that I've noticed are worth examining. One is, and this was a little new to me, I wish I'd thought of it before, the neighborhood, the process for a neighborhood group to ask for a designation probably could be better defined. That there, it seems a little vague to me, and it could be better defined in code. The second thing, and this was something that was very frustrating to me on the commission, issues like the cost of historic preservation, the economic impacts of that, the sustainability of housing, the density of housing, the affordability of housing, those are things that fall sometimes under the historic preservation, but these, I wasn't, we aren't the, weren't the experts to figure that out, right? That, to me, was scope creep when we would start to talk about that, because it really, to me, those are not the specialties of people who are on the Historic Preservation Commission. So, I think some other way, some other policy mechanism for considering those things would be a very valuable thing. They're relevant, they're important, but you don't want to ask historic preservation specialists to figure out affordable housing plans. It's just not the purview. Third is, we've heard this several times tonight, there's really no options on a demo delay other than demo it or designate it, and it really does need some kind of middle ground. I have thoughts on that, but I've got 41 seconds. And then the last, and I think probably the biggest, is that the code, as it is put together, is all stick. All stick. There's going to be a cost, a time you have to spend, et cetera, et cetera, and no carrot. And I think preservation is best done when there are incentives for it. There are federal incentives, but there are no, and they're pretty obscure, but there are no city incentives. I could not talk my neighbors into designating a district because I got no good reason for it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Has anybody raised a hand on Zoom? Is there anybody else in chambers who would like to make a public comment? Go ahead and make your way to the chair. Be assertive and upfront about standing up. Make sure to sign in and state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Hey, that's good. Sure. Hello, my name is James Ford. I live in what is Cottage Grove, will be a conservation district, we hope. I really want to just respond to Matt Flaherty's first concerns about voting and who makes the decisions. I don't know who matters to you. I'd like to hear from you. Do you think that people who own a house in Bloomington but live in the Bronx and never come to Bloomington, does that matter to you, that they are in part of the process? What about a student who comes and moves into our neighborhood, who could potentially be a voter and vote you back into your position? Do they matter? Even if they're only living in our neighborhood for one year? Do we involve them in the process? Do we actively reach out to the 90% of our population, which are renters, student renters? What about people who own properties and rent them out, but they don't live in the neighborhood? They live, say, out of town. One person owns 10 properties. Do they count as 10, or do they count as 1? And what if their properties are separated into LLCs? Four LLCs, 10 properties. Are they four votes, 10 votes, one vote? I don't know. And I'd like to hear from city council, what you would expect our guidelines to look like and say, well, we want you to, we want you to survey all the renters and all the property owners, even though they don't live in the state, even though they don't live in the neighborhood. That's all I really want to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else in chambers? Go ahead. Please sign in and state your name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
My name is Tondra Radawan. I am a, live in a uncategorized, I don't live in a neighborhood district because we don't have one yet. We're not a neighborhood. I'm a little bit south of Bryant Park. And I guess for disclosure, I also assist this commission at times, taking minutes. I don't have any decision-making authority. I just take the notes and do my best to make sure they're accurate. I guess I wasn't really going to speak, but I did want to, after the previous speaker mentioned the makeup of this town being potentially 90% renters, I do think that is a little bit high. But I do want to say that I don't think that it is all student renters. Many of the people that rent in this town are not students. They're families, they're professionals that can't afford to live here, that may have been trying to buy a house here, and they haven't been able to for a long time. I know that in the makeup of my neighborhood, I was fortunate enough to buy a home. I've always wanted to live in an older home. I live in a 1920s Victorian home that I was able to buy because it was completely rundown, and my landlord that also had 20 properties was trying to get rid of that one because of the cost of the foundation and the cost of the roof and the cost of repairs were so much that he wanted to get rid of that one. I think that seeing our neighborhood changing over the 10 years that I've lived there, there used to be families that lived across from me, wonderful people. One person that had raised their children, their grandchildren in their family home. And that house was bought, it became a rental. After that, it was all divided, and it's an Airbnb. The house next to me, another wonderful family. That same owner that was in a bidding war with other friends of mine that were trying to make it a family home, bought the house next to it, so that family had to leave. Wonderful tenants for a year and a half. That is now an Airbnb. And then the house behind it, that was a garage, has been converted to an Airbnb. I would like to have stability in my neighborhood. I would like to know my neighbors, but I can't know them if they're just different people every two to three days, and I'm not sure if that's anything that this council can address. I think that more people that are wanting to be invested in their neighborhoods and in their homes, and if they're landlords and they don't want to pay for what it takes to restore their home, they could use some of that rental money that they're taking from their renters and use that to pay the fines and restore their homes and preserve the neighborhoods in those ways. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else in chambers who would like to make a comment this evening? I don't see anybody jumping up. Has anybody raised a hand on Zoom? Great, okay. Thank you to all the public who commented on this topic this evening. Bringing us back, I think, to Councilmember Zulik. How did you want to close the discussion?
Well, I have my next steps, action items, written out. I can read them, if you'd like, from the notes that I've taken. Number one, we need a more consistent approach to reporting houses that we notice might be at risk of needing demolition. We need an alternative to the demo delay, apart from council designation or approval of demolition. And we need a more formalized system of informing potential homebuyers of the historic nature of their property. Am I missing anything in terms of action items and things that we've discussed?
Asking the mayor for getting the voting members appointed.
I will do my best on that.
Yes, qualified.
Yes, and I guess I'll just conclude by saying, I think this was really productive, and I want to thank everyone, all of the HPC members, and then it looks like Sam has something to say, too.
Thank you again for hosting this, and we would invite any members of the council who are interested to attend one of our meetings to see what we do. We're there every second and fourth Thursday at 5:00, just down the hall.
Yes, and it can also be accessed over Zoom.
Fair.
And thank you for all of the people who are in the audience who came to speak or who just came to listen.
Are there any councilmembers who want to make any closing comments about anything that they've heard tonight, or respond to anything public commenters brought up? Councilmember Rallo.
Well, yes, I just want to thank the members of the commission for coming and sharing information and their experiences. It's been very interesting and productive for me. Maybe this is too general a question right now, but it was brought up, I think, a couple times. If there are certain things, certain aspects of our zoning code that is a particular concern for protecting historic structures and maybe affordability as well, I would like to know. So, if you want to mention it now, that's fine. If you'd prefer, you know, to email council, that would be great, because it is within our purview to perhaps address it and remedy it and change code. So, again, thank you, and if there's anyone who would like to share anything right now, I'd be interested, but we can reserve that for email exchange, too. Thank you.
Thank you. An entirely different meeting that we would need to have.
Yeah, I think so.
In favor of keeping time, I would say we should keep that either to email or have another one of these lovely, productive meetings.
Are there other councilmembers who want to make any closing comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I also want to thank the members of the HPC who came and the people in the public who came to speak with us. I think this was a really interesting exchange and really brought to light some things we need to work on. I think, I do want to mention one thing that I don't think is really in the HPC's purview, but that I heard tonight and that I agree is a concern, and that is really having feedback from everybody who lives in a neighborhood or who lives in a neighborhood maybe, you know, more than 10 months, because there are a lot of people who rent and who rent long-term, and I'm concerned that they are not being brought into the process when historic preservation is discussed. So, that might be something just to talk to hand about, maybe talk to our Angela Van Roy or other neighborhood liaisons about. So, thank you. And thank you to Councilmember Zulik for organizing.
Thank you. Are there other councilmembers who wish to make a comment? Okay, I would also like to thank everybody for coming, and thank you to Councilmembers Zulik for organizing. And I also wanted to address one of the public commenters, Wendy, whose last name I missed, I'm sorry, who mentioned some concerns about permits and the people that she'd seen maybe some renovations in her neighborhood and couldn't find permitting for them. That if you have questions or concerns about that, one option is to file a U report, because that will automatically kind of filter into the right person. You can file those anonymously, or if you attach your name to it and email, then you'll automatically get like updates on it. But if you file it anonymously and then just take note of the report number, you can look that up later and kind of follow along with what they said. You could also call the planning department and ask them directly and just be like, hey, what's going on with this? I actually did that last year about something. I was like, hey, this street is closed. What's going on with that? And they generally kind of know, and if they don't know, they can be good at getting back. So, I wanted to address that as a concern, because there should not be large renovations happening under the radar. But it is also one of those, you know, realities that our planning and enforcement staff can't just be like constantly driving around this town, up and down every single street all of the time, checking for things like this. So, it is kind of incumbent on the public to go like, hey, I'm concerned about this thing that's happening. And I also just want to show some appreciation for all of the public commenters that we got tonight, that there were lots of interesting things that lots of folks had to say from their perspectives. And I'm really glad to hear that there's, you know, from the different historic districts represented this evening and from members of the public, that they were very deliberate about their committee groups and their committee structures and trying to make sure to be inclusive. And I would hope that all of the committees are like that, but my guess is that that's not, they're not necessarily like that, and so that would be an aspiration. So, if there are no other closing comments from anybody, I'll just say that our next regular session is next Wednesday night at 6:30, and we are adjourned. Thank you.